America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Rhodes?
Second.
Second, Morrell. And Mr. Little did call in that he would not be able to attend tonight, so we need a mo— oh, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And then we need a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Little.
So moved. Second.
Rhodes, second, Ivy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Smith, you have a report for us, or actually two reports. Thank you for coming tonight. You're the current Chair of the Environmental Commission?
That is correct.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time tonight. Just wanted to touch base a little bit on the Environmental Commission, what we've accomplished this past year, and what we plan to do. We have participated the past couple of years in the Memorial Day Parade, and we've had some help from local businesses and so forth. You've seen the hybrid vehicles that Briarwood Ford loaned us, so we're trying to help raise awareness is one of the things that we've done. We had a very exciting rain barrel class that was at the rec center, and it was very well attended, so much so that we had to have a second class because we ran out of room. We have done different things with partnering with the local neighborhood and community high schoolers when we went out and did the catch basins for the drain marking and so forth, and so we had a good attendance for that. And as far as educating, we went around handing out door knockers and door flyers and things like that as well to help raise awareness, to help educate is what we are charged to do by the city council. And we also have had different things as far as water tasting in the booth and so forth to get people to notice the difference about our nice reverse osmosis water that we have here in the city versus bottled water, so tap versus bottle. Couple of other things we have done as far as getting involved with Oktoberfest just recently, we tried a little flavor as far as getting recycling boxes there to see what the turnout would be. Could have had a better response, but a lot of that comes with educating and so forth as far as raising awareness, you know, for the people in the town and so forth. There's a lot of trash that was put in there instead of recycling, so those things, you know, will come in time. We have a few different subcommittees that we have been working on. We have a special projects commission, and one of our representatives, Marcia Belair, is on there. And this, in a nutshell, one of their main responsibilities is to review tax abatement applications and so forth a couple times a year or as needed. We also participate with the River Raisin Watershed Council, and Cornelius Crawford is the representative for us in this year, 2010. And so these are working in partnership with the River Raisin Watershed Council there to just help with research, cleanup, testing, a lot of different things like that to protect the water that runs through here and Lenawee and County that connects us there. And then also, we have Noah Harden, who is on the Washtenaw County Consortium of Solid Waste Management. And so the main purpose of their meetings is to discuss and study solid waste, recycling, and utilization of recycled products. And we have just recently been recommended to, from the Stormwater Citizens Advisory Committee, the CAC, and that has been my responsibility. That is a new project we're undertaking to help with that as well. We also have non-city members that participate in our subcommittee, so that is Ian Twiss and Jeff Morris, and they're involved actively in helping and participating as well. As far as budget, we have been well within our budget for this year. We have some upcoming events that we plan to participate with, also with the downtown committee and so forth, working with David Rhodes and others to see how we can participate with that. And so we plan to, you know, be good stewards of that money that was awarded to us for that, as well as other projects. And we are also going to help with the Mill Pond, the dog run area, for water and soil erosion. So we've committed a number of man-hours for that between our own friends and family and so forth to help participate as that gets up and running as well. In a nutshell, that is a brief overview, and the goal is what we plan to do. And I'm open for any questions for any clarification or more in-depth information I can try and answer.
Oh, thank you. I don't notice if any councilmembers have any questions. Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Smith, thank you for your presentation this evening. A question regarding how the commission feels about the council's empowerment of the commission. One of the goals in our last goal-setting session was to empower the Environmental Commission to be more effective. And I think, as you have described in the results of this year, that that has happened, but I wonder if you could bring the commission's consensus as to whether or not council has done enough. Are there other avenues of support that we could offer?
Good question. And that's one thing we plan to discuss at tomorrow's meeting as well, that we've had brief discussion on as well. And that was as far as what our responsibility would be. We have been charged as more of a, you know, recommendation and advisory committee, you know, as far as assisting the city. But the actual ordinance stated in the bylaws, in the code ordinances there, just worded it a little bit different, so we want to review, revisit that, to make sure that we are in concordance with what is recommended. So we, I think, at this point, we appreciate the input from the city council as well as the city involvement. Could we do more? Sure. And are we willing to do more? Yes. We have the people on the council who are excited about improving the city the best they can, obviously within the confines of budget constraints and all of those other things that always come into play. But, so hopefully, does that answer your question, or did I?
Yes, it does. If I might follow up with one more question.
Sure.
Do we have any vacancies on the commission at this point?
As a matter of fact, we have one vacancy. We just had an appointment that will be replacing Lee Chaping for the city representative, but there's actually one vacancy for the committee.
Well, just to take an opportunity to invite those that might be interested in environmental issues in the city to perhaps see into volunteering and being on our commission.
Yes, by all means. And one thing that we've been very proud of, my predecessor, Scott, who was the chairperson before, did a yeoman's job in creating a website, celinebegreen.com. So if you have a chance to take a look at that, I'm sure most of you have, but celinebegreen.com is a wonderful site. You can learn about what we're doing, email info there as well, so you can reach out and ask questions such as, how do I get involved, and what can I do to participate? So thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there further questions from any councilmembers?
Okay, and next I will touch on the sustainability office survey. This was new for us, obviously new, I think, for a lot of the city departments and so forth, but it was also very exciting because we were happy to find that a lot of things that we were hoping that would be taking place were already in place. So that was very good. So I won't read the whole report, but it is something that you can find on the city's website as well, and I think all of the councilmembers have a copy of this as well, so I don't want to belabor it. But I do want to point out that there were some things that we went through and were happy about as far as recycling. So most of the departments, 10 of 11, were complying in recycling and felt they were doing an above-average job, so that was exciting to hear. Over 73% of, all the recycling was almost or always, so they had made a conscious effort, so it wasn't something that was kind of haphazard. Waste reduction was great as well. 10 out of 11 departments were above, felt they were doing an above-average job on that. And just some of the minor things that we understand with the budget and the economy and things like that were limited to. We were also informed by Bob Skoll and some of the other department heads that there are other things in place so that when bids come up or needs come up for vehicles or for energy star-rated appliances and things like that, that there are other factors in place to make sure you make right decisions on what to use for those as far as return on investment and things like that. So those are just some of the things we want to just help encourage and reinforce. But we are very pleased, very excited, and I'm sure and hope most of you were as well.
Any questions on the report on the office policies supporting sustainability? Any questions? Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor. A question for City Manager Campbell. Were there any eye-openers in this report, and how did you and your staff receive it in terms of making any immediate changes or any planned long-term changes in what we're doing in the city hall?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for telling me. I don't think there was any surprises, because I think overall, I think we do a very good, this organization does a very good job of recycling and being sustainable. So it's not just recycling, but other efforts. There are some things that we've talked about earlier on, before this came about, the ways, for instance, the way we have some lighting downstairs in the basement when this building was built. For whatever reason, there's lights that stay on 24/7 that are wired that way that don't need to be, but there is some expense in changing that, but that is something that we want to look at. But as far as, I mean, there's a number of departments utilize their scrap paper, if you will, where it's still good on one side if they're printing off a draft copy of a letter, for instance. They'll take a used piece of paper and put it in the printer and run it through, so they're not wasting paper that way. So, but yeah, I mean, it's, for the most part, and again, this was before, you know, I've been here for almost three years, and this was, a lot of this was already being done before I ever came around, so certainly credit to the organization as a whole. But again, as with everything, we can always be better, and so we'll continue to work on some of those things. One of the items is recommendations about purchasing paper that is made up of recycled materials. We're going to begin, because we looked at it, and really, it's slightly, when I say, I mean, it's not very much more expensive whatsoever, so we'll, we're going to start doing that as well.
I think the city definitely should set the example, acting as a green community. That was identified as a core value when we did our goal-setting last time. And I think this report is excellent. I commend the commission, and I thank you, Mr. Campbell, for your comments, and I'm glad to hear that it was, although not anything new, but it was certainly relevant, and there are some things that you will incorporate as we go down the line on this. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
For you, you didn't, I didn't really hear clearly. Are you setting your goals tomorrow for the next year?
Well, those are some, yes, we have—
So are you planning on doing the rain barrels again, a class?
Well, that is not on the agenda, but that is something that, you know, is something we were excited about, and it was affordable, you know, as far as the cost and the manpower. We had Connie's husband did pretty much all of the work, so that helped. We didn't have to pay anybody, and he was knowledgeable about that, so we have to look at the availability for that in the future. But I think we had a great success at the rec center, you know, with that and the great turnout. So by all means, you know, that is definitely something we can discuss and look at again.
The other thing that I was curious about, if you have talked as a commission about, you know, insulation credits, some of the credits that are available for energy efficiency for homeowners, and whether or not you wanted to do a byline or some kind of, I know, we could do it through FYI or on the website or through a class, multiple areas of opportunity there. There's a couple of groups in the region that do, are helping communities with weatherization and for housing issues, and then also just various other sustainable efforts that are sort of state-of-the-art, that I don't know if you had looked at any of that at all yet for next year. And I know, I know that you've been working for a budget line item for the recycle bins downtown and the BDA, and I think we're trying to partner on that.
Right.
So, but yeah, I think, I heard really positive things about the rain barrels, and so you might try another class, and if you don't have the attendance, then, you know, but certainly that, so it was a really creative idea, and, you know, it's an important resource that's really valuable, so even though we don't actually monetize it that way, we're pretty fortunate in this area of the country. So I don't know, does anybody else have any questions about what the Environmental Commission's doing? We do appreciate all the work that you're doing, because it is, you know, it's a lot of learning, and, but it's very important to the future of our community and wise use of our resources, so thank you.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that on to the committee.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you all.
The next item on our agenda, William St. Moore is going to come and talk about the survey that we just completed, or citizens just completed, the tabulation of it.
Thank you, everybody, for inviting me to come out and work with the city again on this particular effort. My name is William St. Amore. I am the Executive Director of Cobalt Community Research. We're a nonprofit that works with cities really across the country, looking at citizen engagement, how to improve citizen engagement, and also looking at how we can improve the budget process in terms of what are the priorities that residents would like to see. And at the moment, I'm locked up. It's not working. So bear with me.
It's not working. It's not working. Do we need to reboot it?
Yeah, I'm just playing with it here. It's locking up on the, we're just looking through the projector.
If you want, we can— We can do the citizen comments and consent agenda.
Okay. I can reboot it back there, but—
Is it here or is it—
Okay, it's here.
So does it need to be rebooted?
We'll try it.
Ian, we'll just go, we'll go ahead and then put that, this after citizen comments and consent agenda. So—
Do you mind adding someone?
Is it working?
Yeah, I think he's got it.
So it's working now?
Let's just do it now.
Sorry.
All right, I apologize for the delay. So we're a 501(c)(3) that works with local governments across the country, specifically for budget issues and citizen engagement. The study goals for this particular project is, and today is to give you a summary of these results. We wanted to look at the budget and strategic planning decisions that you're facing and give you some data to be a guideline for that. We wanted to explore some of the service assumptions that you have in place and look at your baseline service levels today compared with your service levels when we did this two years ago. We also wanted to look at which particular services currently provide the greatest amount of impact, the most bang for the buck for the city in terms of driving citizen satisfaction and also citizen engagement. And citizen engagement is measured by things like remaining in the community, recommending it to others, supporting the current administration, volunteering, and encouraging businesses to move in. We also have benchmarked the results across a number of different benchmarks, both statewide in the Midwest and nationally as well, so you can see how well the city of Celine performs compared with these other organizations nationally and at these different levels. Bottom line is that the city performed very well. You're well above the benchmarks in almost every area. Despite the drop in the benchmark scores in 2000, since 2008, for example, the state of Michigan overall dropped quite a bit in terms of citizen satisfaction with their communities. Celine weathered this very well, as you'll see in just a minute. Again, there are opportunities to further boost service levels to improve community-wide satisfaction, but really the scores are very solid, and the results show that this is much more of a tuning kind of issue and that there's nothing that's really broken. From a methodology standpoint, we did a single mailing to all of the residents on the voter registration list. We had a response from over 1,000, over 1,100 actually, so that's about 17%. That gives us a margin of error of plus or minus 2.3%. And for some of the analysis, it's a much tighter kind of analysis, that's just over a 1% margin of error. Looking at research, there are several different pieces that you want to use as you're going into your decision-making process. This kind of information is one tool that's in your toolbox, but that goes along with your own individual judgment and also all of the standards and regulations that are applicable to the different service areas that you're looking at. Let's dive into the results. How well did Celine do compared to outside organizations? And there's several different benchmarks that are available that are shown on the screen. Your score is blue, the score, that's the first one on the left on each of these columns. The orange is Michigan for similarly sized communities. The light blue in the center of each of those columns is Michigan overall. The purple is Midwest, Midwestern cities of similar size. Then the green is the national benchmark for similarly sized cities. And what you can see across this is for the Celine benchmarks overall, you're well above the benchmarks in each of these areas, whether we're looking at the state of Michigan overall, state of Michigan similarly sized communities, or across the Midwest and across the nation. So you have a very good story to tell. Now, some of the scores are higher than others, so you'll want to pay attention to that. For example, economic health, even though you're well above the benchmark, it's still a low score. We do live in Michigan, so that's just part of the reality, but that's still a low score that you'd want to pay attention to. And you have a number of areas that are very high, as far as fire and emergency services, library services, many areas that are above 80. And really, when you're above 60, you're in pretty solid grounds, so you can see that you're doing very well. Taking a look at some other types of measurements, this is taking a look at overall satisfaction on the far left-hand side of the chart. Again, you're well above the various benchmarks that I was talking about. Community image is the next area. There's a whole series of perceptions that go along with that. Safe place to live, enjoyable for children, enjoyable for young adults and seniors, enjoyable for everyone else, that the community is physically attractive, it's a great place to live, great place for business, growing responsibly, safety in terms of a safe place to bike, safe place to walk at night. Really, across the line, you can see that in almost all of these areas, you're above the benchmarks. Volunteering, you're about even with the benchmarks, and also, you're just a little bit above even as far as young adults, but overall, very solid performance from the city's perspective. Again, you want to look at your highs and lows. You have several high scores, well above 80, and you have some scores that are down below 70, so those are areas that you want to pay a little bit more attention to. Looking at the scores of the city compared with 2008, when we did this last time, right at the turn of 2008, 2009, most areas, you performed very well, just a little bit of variation on the scores, which is normal whenever you're doing surveys side to side. I circled some areas that were a bit more of a significant change. Community image dropped a little bit. We've seen that overall with the state, and we've seen that with Celine too. Safe place to live, that's dropped a little bit. Enjoyable place for young adults, that's actually gone up a little bit for the city of Celine, as has the great place for business piece. So we are seeing some movement in these numbers. There are areas that we started covering in 2010 that we didn't cover in 2008, and those are where those blue lines are by themselves in the middle, looking at a safe place to bike and walk, safe place to walk at night, perfect community for me. So those are some of the new areas that were measured. Looking at a driver analysis, what are the things that are really moving engagement and satisfaction within the city? The way to read this chart, things across the top, these are your relative strengths. On the bottom, these are your relative weaknesses. This is on a scale of 0 to 100. So on the vertical, you want to notice that the scale starts at a 50, too, so all of these things are above 50. So that's one piece to keep in mind, that none of these areas are really broken. But your relative strengths across the top, and then the relative, the things that are drivers, stronger drivers are on the right-hand side of the chart. Parks, community events, local government management, property taxes, economic health, those are the things that are driving certain outcomes for the citizens. Things like remaining in the community, recommending it to others, encouraging others to move in, supporting the current administration, volunteering, encouraging businesses to move in. Those are the things that are being impacted by these areas over on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side, those are areas that may still be very important, but they're not necessarily the drivers of those types of decisions. So for example, fire and emergency services, very high score, performed very well, but that's not necessarily the thing that people think about when they're deciding whether to live in Celine or in another community. Compared with parks and recreation, that's much more of a differentiator between why they choose here instead of another community. Okay, this chart is intentionally hard to read. This is looking at a series of city-specific services. Again, satisfaction level is on the vertical, and then we looked at the importance in funding the services on the horizontal. And what you can see is that all of your services clustered pretty highly in terms of satisfaction level, so you're doing a good job in terms of delivering the service levels. All of them are somewhat very important, but from an analysis standpoint, from the perspective of making choices between these different services and where to put your resources, we zoom in on this cluster here, and you can see that the scales have changed so that you can identify what are the relative strengths, weaknesses, and the relative funding importance of each of these different services. So as with the last bubble chart, relative strengths are on the top, relative weaknesses are in the bottom. Again, the scale starts at a 7.6, so even the lowest score is a very solid kind of performance. The importance has to do with the importance in funding these various services. We asked residents to rate the importance of funding each of them. They rated them on a scale of 1 to 10, so things on the right-hand side have a higher importance in funding than areas on the left-hand side. We also had a series of questions looking at a scenario where there are not enough dollars available to fund all of the services. And if funds are not available for all of those services, which budgetary actions would the residents support? So you can see on the far left-hand side, the scale, which is the percentage of folks who specify these particular actions. And here's a couple of them, looking at raising taxes or raising user fees if there aren't funds available to cover these different services. So what you see, for example, on the far left-hand side, building codes and permitting, there's not a lot of support for raising taxes if there's not enough funding. There is a fair amount of support for raising fees. On the far right-hand side, looking at police and fire, if there's not enough funding, there is more support for raising taxes there, not a lot of support for raising fees. So as you look across all of these different services, you can see what the relative levels of support are for these different types of revenue enhancement strategies. Now, there's also the other side. If there aren't enough funds available, what kind of benefit reductions would people support? And so this is taking a look at eliminating the service in red. It's a little bit hard to read on this particular projector, but reducing service levels is a little bit darker yellow band across the middle. Reducing staffing levels is the lighter yellow across the top. So what we see here, in terms of budget reduction, not a lot of support for reducing service levels in things like police and fire, more support for some sort of service reduction kind of strategies with some of these other areas in the center. Third option, looking at combining services with another community or privatizing or outsourcing some of these services. Similar sort of chart, we're looking at the percentage specifying as the vertical, but you can see what the level of support is for either combining services in the light green or privatizing and outsourcing in the darker green. And this is just a summary chart showing relatively where people come down in terms of the different types of budgetary actions for each of the services. What do they support in terms of a theme for each of these services? One of the areas covered in the survey was looking at Oakwood Cemetery, which is now reaching capacity. One of the questions is whether or not there's support to expand the cemetery. And we have the percentage specifying, yes, they support it, no, they don't support it, or they're undecided, they don't know, in the green over on the right-hand, or on the left-hand side. We then had a second question asking if there was support for additional fees or taxes for the cemetery expansion. And you can see those numbers are lower in terms of yes, just about 10%, for no, it's up above 60%, and then you can see in green again, the don't know for that particular Communication preference. We had a section here looking at how people prefer to receive information from the city, and then also, where do they go most often for local news? And you can see this by different type of media outlet and channel. Overall, people prefer to receive their information by mail, followed by newsletter, followed by email, and then the city website. So those are the top areas. And again, you've got the detail underneath this to show you how people prefer to receive their information by demographic groups, so based on age and so on. Where do people go most often for their news? Number one places to the newspaper, followed by TV and the internet. One of the things to keep in mind is that the internet, you can see here that a lot of folks, up over 40%, go to the internet for news. You've got only about 25% who are currently using the city website, so there's an opportunity here to educate the folks of some of the features that you've added to your website and some of the important information that's available there. to your website and some of the important information that's available there. Going into action, what do you do with this information once you have it? This is a cycle. One way of approaching this kind of information, you've done the first step, which is measurement. The second step is really to take a look at which areas do you want to improve and brainstorming ideas. List out as many ideas as you can on how to make those services better. You have a series of comments from the study as well that can help fill that as well. Once you have your list of ideas, the next step is to validate, working with line staff, working with citizen groups, to say, okay, here's some of the things that we came up with, what's missing from the list, which things make the most sense on the ground. Step four, training, making sure that staff have the right tools and skills to implement these changes. Step five is actual implementation, project management. What are the deliverables? What's the timeframe in terms of the project and how things roll up? Then at some point, coming back and measure again to make sure that you've made progress in those areas that you want to make progress on. So finally, really be clear about your strategic outcomes. We really want to optimize the citizen experience in Celine. What are the characteristics of an ideal community through resident's eyes? And the bottom line is that residents really do want you to succeed. People overall are very proud of their hometown here, and they are certainly very willing to work with you to take the community to an even higher level. So are there any questions?
Any questions? To be fair, we did have a work session before, so a lot of questions were asked, but I don't know if anybody has any. I know our plan, the general public, our plan is to use the survey when we do our strategic planning and goal-setting. On Saturday, we have a all-day session that's open to the public, so we'd be happy to have any public come and help us along, but to look at long-range goals, and we're going to use this as a tool to make decisions. So I don't know if council members have any questions.
No, thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay. Under, we have unfinished business and comments on agenda items under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizens may come forward at this time, make comment or question items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury. I had three items, but I'll address, the one was the survey. Apparently, nobody wants to get in the cemetery business from the survey. The other comment is on the Huntington Woods Phase One, accepting the streets and lights. My concern is, and I think this was addressed by one council member, as far as the construction traffic, because it's not all built. And when we were doing another subdivision years ago, it really tore up the highway because they were entering through one area and out. And I think that it should be somehow stipulated that their construction traffic will be going into a different area rather than on the street, especially after the city taxpayers will be accepting this cost. And I know the lights are going to be $14,000 in three years, but my concern is really the maintenance of the street and that the construction traffic be done in a different area that they provide. Thank you.
Any other issues and comments? Not will move on to consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, through request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve is submitted.
Move Marle, Second Roads, to approve and adopt the items on the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a public hearing tonight, 10/165. This is a request for special land use approval on 8/15 Woodland Drive. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt in the October 29, 2010 memo from Celine City Planning Commission. In the October 22, 2010 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel. Special, actually, do we have a motion to acknowledge receipt?
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second. Move Ivy, Second to Har. Questions on the memos? Mr. Rubel? Okay, a special land used applied for, oh, sorry, I don't have time for that tonight. All in favor to acknowledge receipt of the two memos, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Special land used applied for request of, this is a request of Huron Valley Volleyball Clubs and K. Anthony Glinky for a special land used to use 12,100 square foot or one half of the building at 8/15 Woodland Drive East Celine for an indoor sports facility in an I-2 industrial district. Celine City Tax Code 18-12-31-205-418. Okay, do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
So move. Second.
Move Rhodes, Second Law. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Is there any comments on this item?
To close the public hearing.
Second.
Marle, Second Ivy, to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. This public hearing is now closed. This would be a motion to approve or deny the special land used requested by Huron Valley Volleyball Clubs and K. Anthony Glinky for the use of 12,100 square foot or one half of the building at 8/15 Woodland Drive East Celine for an indoor sports facility in an I-2 industrial district, subject to the following conditions. One, if parking demands exceed the amount provided on-site, the owner shall provide a new parking plan to this planning commission for review and approval. Two, the barrier-free parking signs that are missing shall be replaced. Three, the property owner shall provide to the planning commission by March 1, 2011, a detailed rehabilitation plan for the pavement and a timeline for completion of the improvements. Four, the property owner shall obtain all required building permits, code compliance review, and a certificate of occupancy from the Celine Building Inspector. And five, that the lighting of the parking lot shall be reviewed by city staff and must be adequate for nighttime usage of the parking lot. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move Rhodes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second Law, to approve? Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. Question to Mr. Rubel. When will the volleyball club begin to use the facility?
I believe they wanted to have this approved so they could use it the first, by the first of the year.
And a concern that I have is with the letter that came in for the parking lot plan of action, which gives the owner until September 31 to clean and seal and re-strive that parking lot. And I don't really understand why it's so late in the year if it's going to be used right away. I'd like to see that date moved up to perhaps the end of May, because obviously, it's something that needs to be done in warm weather. But for safety purposes, it seems like it ought to be done sooner than later.
I can't answer that for the owner, but the owner's representative is here, is here, if you would like to ask her. That's Danielle Grostick, and perhaps she could, she's right over here.
So the plan for the parking, we're going to be filling the potholes this winter, like in the next couple of weeks. The season starts in January, it ends middle of June. So basically, after that, then we have already a quote to reseal and strike the parking lot at that point in time, and that's what the September, September date was for.
So is the club not using the space then between June and September?
Correct. We're a winter-type team.
Okay, that lessens my concern, and thank you.
Wait, hold on a second, we might have other questions. Thanks. Mr. Law?
Just for clarification, exactly, this property is on Woodland, exactly where, Gary, is it? Is it the address is on here, but I just need...
Right, it's the second building from Maple Road. The first building is where we approved the Michigan Sports Academy last year about this time, who also is using about half the building for an indoor recreation, which is becoming more popular in the industrial park lately. So we did a similar thing last year, but it's the second building over, Rosedale is there, I think it's Rosedale, or, excuse me, Ann Arbor Plastics is in that front part.
Thank you.
Are there further questions on the motion? Thank you. If there's no further questions on the motion, we have a motion here to approve the special land used requested by Huron Valley Volleyball Clubs with conditions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, item 0866, Section A, Huntington Woods Street Acceptance and Street Lighting Transfer, should be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 3, 2010 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel regarding acceptance of Huntington Woods Phase One Streets per agreement between the city of Celine and the Huntington Woods Homeowners Association for Act 51 reporting to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution for street addition, accepting the streets of Huntington Woods Phase One into the city's local street system.
Move to approve and adopt.
Motion by Marle, do we have a second?
Support.
Second Rhodes, Mr. Rubel? Do we have questions?
I've got one.
Yes.
And I'd appreciate maybe going over your report briefly, Mr. Rubel. But in addition to that, can you address the concern that Mrs. Hess articulated tonight? Because I've heard that from a few other citizens, and I believe the answer that you provided at our last meeting regarding an issue at Huntington Woods was sufficient, so I want to make sure that's on the record again.
Right. The standard for building residential streets improved greatly over the last 20 years, so that that street is basically a full-depth structure of asphalt over a very strong limestone base. So it will, it would definitely hold up to the construction traffic. It holds up now to the refuse trucks, which are the heaviest vehicles on the road. However, as we do with all our, you know, large developments, when the development agreement would come through for Phase Two, that would be addressed at that time with that developer. And so whatever agreement came out of that, whatever ideas came out of that, that would be worked into the development agreement and become a condition of it.
I think Mr. Marle did ask for a brief summary, if you want to just go through, because I know you've done this already. We've done this before.
At the last council meeting, we approved the lengthy development agreement between, or the, excuse me, the transfer agreement between the city and the homeowners association. There were a number of responsibilities for each party, the city as well as the homeowners association. At this point, the homeowners association has fulfilled their obligations to bring the three actions tonight. They have provided the $16,000 check to cover the miscellaneous repairs that we will augment in the next 18, 24 months. We have the approval, actually, just a day before we could get this memo in, from Detroit Edison, and we have the street lighting agreement, and all that's been settled as far as if, you know, whether or not they have to replace it or not, but all that's been settled, and that's the, that's the second item on the agenda. And thirdly, as we take dedication of the streets, we need traffic control orders for the stop signs and some of the other signs, so that they're enforceable. So the first action that will be taken on Part A is the street acceptance, basically, of the deed, which they've already signed. We have to have ownership of the deed before January 1, and we have to have it recorded, and Mr. Grosten will record it quickly. There's plenty of time for that. And as soon as that deed is recorded, then we have ownership of the street, we have all the surveys, they have provided the surveys per the agreement, and we have the documents to send to the state in March, and then it'll be, in June 30, it'll officially become a city street per state standards. It'll be officially ours tonight for our maintenance.
Mr. Rhodes? I was going to ask this question when we got to Part C, but since you mentioned it, and you're up here already, who pays for the stop signs? Need to go in?
It's in the agreement. They are paying for the upgraded signs.
Part of the 16,000.
Yes, part of the 16,000.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I'd just like to compliment Huntington Woods and city staff for working through, I know this was quite an effort, and to work through all the issues regarding this transfer and... I will say that I was one of the people way back in the day that voted to privatize streets in an effort to save money, and I think that personally, that was a mistake in that, you know, everybody pays the same amount of taxes. And so we, I personally feel that I learned a big lesson, and, you know, that's, sometimes it's about realizing you're not doing the right thing later, and not at the time, but we were, you know, looking at it, at the time, I personally was looking at it as something, a way to save the city, you know, dollars long-term, and I think we realized that maybe it wasn't the best resolution for that particular area of concern. So I just wanted to commend Mr. Rubel and staff for, I know this took a lot of time in Huntington Woods, I know that, you know, this has been somewhat time-consuming and trying to, especially with the way the economy turned around and the way the subdivision is, that it's been a very difficult environment for you, so... And we have further lots and also an agreement with Celine Township that will extend longer than I think we originally projected, but at any rate, that's okay. As it comes in, it will go out. So anyhow, so I don't have any further comments. Is there any further comments for anybody else on council?
No.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve and adopt the resolution for the street addition, accepting the streets of Huntington Woods Phase One into the city's local street system. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, this is a motion and a second to acknowledge receipt of the November 2, 2010 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel regarding transfer of private streetlights to municipal streetlights, to approve or not approve the standard agreement for municipal street lighting between the Detroit Edison Company and the city of Celine for the transfer of 13 streetlights in Huntington Woods Phase One. For Detroit Edison to furnish, install, operate, and maintain street lighting equipment as provided in Exhibit A with an annual municipal lamp charge of $4,562.67. To authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute said agreement after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to approve and authorize.
Move Ivy, to approve and authorize. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second to Har. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the traffic control orders number 2206, 2207, and 2208 for traffic signage in Huntington Woods.
So move.
Second.
Move to approve and adopt?
Correct. Sorry.
And Mr. Marle?
Yes, that's correct, mayor.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, 109, this would be 2010 community survey results. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the presentation by William T. Moore and the results of the 2010 community survey from Cobalt Community Research, which we will be putting on the city website and providing further information. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Move Rhodes?
Second.
Second Law. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, item 10, 166, this is a 2011 street and water preliminary engineering design services award agreement. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 9, 2010 memo from Evaluation Committee members Fordice, Taylor, and Rubel to award or not award the 2011th street and water main design contract to Process Results Incorporated at a rate of 1.8% as applied to the as-bid construction amount, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute the contract documents with Process Results Incorporated after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to award and authorize.
Move Ivy, do we have a second?
Support.
Second Rhodes.
We have a representative from Process Results here tonight, and that's Mr. Ted Erickson, who was right back there. We have experience of working with Ted with another engineering company for several years and on some other projects. And so he and another person who's moved from that firm to Process Results is now trying to establish the civil engineering aspect of their engineering business at Process Results. The, without going through all the details of the memo, there were two firms we looked at closely out of the six, and they, that happened to be the ones that had scored the most points on the evaluation system and also had the lowest... most points on the evaluation system and also had the lowest cost proposal. And they were very close on the points, but the committee decided to go with the more financially feasible proposal, which was Process Results. The other benefit is they're a local company, and they're right here at the old library on South Ann Arbor Street. And as I mentioned, the city staff basically does more than 50% of the preliminary engineering, and we hand it over to them just to fine-tune it, get in plan and bid form, and then we do actually 100% of the inspection and contract, like, construction management during the construction phase. So that's what allows us to get such a good price on the design portion.
Okay, do you, Mr. Marl?
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. I have two quick questions. One is, the figure here, or the proposal submitted by Process Results is so significantly lower than the other five or six proposals you have on here. Can either yourself or the gentleman representing Process Results provide some context and a little bit of data behind that? Because we're talking about the next or the nearest proposal or submission was a good, basically, $20,000, not quite, but almost $20,000 more than Process. And then the other three are well above that.
Yeah. The, we're looking at, the bid is based on, basis on the percentage, rather than trying to establish or guess at a cost. So percentage basis is fair because it's based on a construction bid.
Right.
So high construction bid, more engineering costs, lower construction bid. And it's fair. So it's the one point, what we're comparing is the 1.8% of Process Results versus the 1.91, which was then revised to 3.5. They sent a letter to clarify that they had not included enough surveying. So with that, and with that clarification, that made it more evident to us that Process Results had the best bid, of course, from the financial aspect. The fact is, the Process Result is willing to do it less with less overhead profit cost and to work their way into the local market. And this type of market in separate relationship with the city, they're willing to present a low figure.
Have we ever, pardon my naivete, have we ever worked with Process Results Incorporated before?
Not on civil projects, I don't believe.
And then my other question, just out of curiosity, because we've done so much work with Tetra Tech, I was interested in knowing why they were not rated in the second category there of your box and then the fourth.
They failed to meet one of the basic provisions of sending in the proposal. They were supposed to review some documents in a notebook, it was mandatory, and they didn't show up to review it.
Well, thank you for clarifying and answering my questions, Mr. Rubel. I'll vote in favor of this motion. I'm sort of cautiously optimistic that Process Results Incorporated would do a great job, and I think it's always beneficial to our community and to our local economy, and we're able to patronize a business that exists within the boundaries of our municipality. So that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Rhodes?
Now that we have this complete streets policy, I'm assuming that those requirements will be looked at when this design is evaluated? And are you far enough into it to know if we'll be able to put any bicycle lanes in yet?
Well, these are not in the category of the complete streets. They're not major streets and major thoroughfares, they're local streets. Tower Nichols and Wallace, where they're just residences and parking on two sides.
Local streets still can use bicycle paths, though, so if it fits, we ought to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We are, we do intend to upgrade ADA ramps, drainage improvements. Basically, this is driven by the water main, of course. The water main needs to be replaced on two of these streets, and then with it the pavement.
Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Rubel, for recapping the committee's evaluation and the committee's findings on this very important project, since it's in my neighborhood. 4,500...
We don't have enough money, sorry.
4,500 feet of new water mains and new pavement and redoing the curbs and making everything conform to the latest specifications. I think it's a long time coming, and I'm very glad to see that we're getting to this stage. My colleague, Mr. Marl, made, I thought, an interesting point when he asked if we had done business with Process Results, excuse me, before, and they've been around, I think, since 1991. And of course, they're not really attuned to this sort of thing. Looking at their website, they do a lot of other different engineering, but not much municipal-oriented engineering. Although I did see that one of the principals had experience in municipal water mains. They've had success in these other projects, so I feel that we can rely on them. But let me get to the question that hasn't been answered, and that is this. If we had not made these staff cuts a year and a half, two years ago, would this have been something that the department would have been able to absorb and not bid out?
No, we're upgrading.
When you had an assistant and you had more clerical staff?
Well, no, we, this would be, this is our same type of process of doing a project, just like Willis Road this year and the five streets we did last year.
But the design engineering, would that have been something that we could have done in-house?
Well, it's, this, what we're doing here is, we are doing most of the design inspection engineering. What we need is them to put together the bid package, the CAD for the plans, put them in a professional document format, because we don't have that expertise, and we don't have that equipment to do that kind of work.
So even turning the clock back a couple of years, we would have still needed help with the design engineering phase of this project?
Yeah, this is, we found this to be a real good, feasible, and economic process.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Other questions? Yes, I just, again, want clarity on the, so Process Results, which I'm delighted that we're using a local business, has new employees that have, I mean, you do this based on QBS, experienced comparable experience, right?
Right.
So the comparable, is the comparable experience based on some new additions to their staffing?
They have two people from Tetra Tech on staff for at least two years now, who have worked with some civil there.
So those are probably the people that...
And the water main that Mr. Ivy...
That would have gone to look at the book if they worked at Tetra Tech.
It was important to the committee that they, you know, that we knew at least one of the...
Yeah, because I'm very familiar with Process Results, and I'm delighted that we're able to use a local firm. I just, I, again, to follow on Councilor Ivy's comment that I didn't know they had this area of expertise, so I'm glad to see that they're moving in that area and that they have staff that have experience in that, and obviously some familiarity with working with the city. So I think that'll be a mutually beneficial scenario. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Rubel? Okay, we have a motion to award and authorize. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rubel.
Thank you.
Item 10, 167, the Saline Rec Center marketing campaign for upcoming events. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 28, 2010 memo from Parks Recreation Director Scruggs to authorize or not authorize a 10% discount off memberships during all special events when membership drives are hosted by the Rec Center and to authorize or not authorize timely incentives as outlined.
Move to authorize and authorize.
Second. Ms. Marl, second to her. Ms. Scruggs, why don't you come up and talk about your incentive program? Best deal in town. I'm sorry? Best deal in town.
As requested, we're kind of planning in advance our special events for the next 12 to 13 months, and we have experienced a great increase or a great response when, during our 10-10-10, when we had our 10% off. And we feel that when we have some upcoming events, like January 9, we're going to have a winter open house, and in February, we're having a member mingle, Super Bowl Saturday thing, and kickoff to summer, we're having a 20-year anniversary coming up in June, June 19. And so we're just trying to plan in advance to have some of these things already in place. And then also, the other part of the request is to offer some special incentive days. And I don't have anything planned right now, but just kind of in between some of the major events, doing some, you know, $30 for 30-day type incentive programs around, you know, possibly Valentine's Day, different holidays and things like that. So just to try to strike up some membership incentive, and also to potentially move from that, the specials into annual memberships. So one of the things that we've been working with, with Design Hub, part of our, the Rec Task Force and the marketing plan is to potential, well, we have the very lovely brochure that we did, marketing the Rec Center, but also these tabletop displays that potentially would go in different locations, sorry, around town to, this would be like a poster that would potentially mark some of these special events, and then we have this as a pickup and/or mark it the Rec Center and then have different postcards that we could put in here marking the special event, like we, you know, mailed out the 10-10-10 poster or postcard. We potentially would put the postcard in here, just to wait to get the word out. And we're also, while I have a quick moment, if you don't mind, we're in the final phases of working on the group membership project, and we have a mock-up of the membership sales folder that would go out and some of the, some of the pieces that would go inside to the different companies and different groups. So I have this available if you'd like to look at it afterwards. I was just given this right before the meeting, so we've marked it up a couple of times, kind of proofing it back and forth, so I think we have a pretty good, pretty good piece that we're ready to go to print with. Yes?
Mr. Marl?
Ms. Scruggs, and I apologize that I missed the last Rec Center Task Force meeting, but on that group or corporate, that material on which we're going to solicit those groups with, when do we suspect or what is our timeframe as to when we're going to get that and have that available for distribution?
This, as soon as I get approval from our city manager, we're ready to go to print with this. So I would say within the next couple of weeks, we'll have this to start using. Our corporate sales or group salesperson, our independent contractor, has already started and has been working renewing some of the upcoming memberships. McNotton and Gunn just renewed. We have Tetra Tech, a couple others that are in the process of renewing right now this month.
I just applaud you for being so innovative and creative, and wish you the best of luck, and again congratulate you on what you've done so far.
Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Rhodes?
I certainly agree with the concept of periodic promotions. It's a well-proven method of increasing business. I have a little concern, though, about doing it so often in that that word will be out, and I think some people will wait to renew when they can get the 10%. So I won't, I'm a little concerned that the end result will be that we've just lowered our membership fee structure by something between what it is now and 10%.
Well, these, the major events are fairly well-advertised, so I don't think that's any big secret. The other things are not going to be scheduled, they're going to be as, you know, kind of as things play out, you know, like I mentioned, you know, potentially, we do like $14 for 14 days during Valentine's Day, you know, during that timeframe. That would be kind of a, just kind of a creative marketing incentive that we could work with.
So the 45 times per year that's referenced in the memo is not specifically the 10% discounts, but all kinds of...
Yeah, different promotions, yes.
I just want to clarify, is it 10% off annual memberships only or all memberships?
All of our memberships, except for the corporates. We don't offer during corporates.
My one. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to, excuse me, Councilmember Rhodes, question and point about the 10% off. You all may recall about a year ago, we actually came to you all requesting a reduction of the 10% to 5% as a means of trying, again, trying to keep as much revenue as possible. However, and Carla can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I recall correctly our conversations we've had, we've actually had comments from our members that have said, and again, we're not talking, you know, the difference between 10 and 5%, it's not a lot of money, but we have had a significant number of comments that said, you know, at 10%, I would sign, I'd renew my membership. 5%, I'm not going to do it, or I can't do it. And so that was one of the driving forces to bring this back up and bring this back to you all. Because again, up until last year, it had been 10% what we would do for price reductions. I just wanted, just as a clarification.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor to authorize and authorize, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 10, 164, CS Lee Master Plan 2010 Draft. It's a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 14, 2010 memo from the City of Saline Planning Commission and CS Lee Master Plan 2010 Draft from the City of Saline Planning Commission. And Carla Warman Associates, and to authorize or not authorize distribution to the surrounding communities for the review and comment. You have a motion?
Move to authorize.
Law, do we have a second?
Second.
Second Ivy, discussion. Mr. Rhodes?
A question that is, when and how do we, as council members, get input into this plan on specific items before it goes out? Or do we?
Those comments can be submitted at any time. Right now, two of the council members, of course, are on the planning commission, have been through the process for the last year and a half, basically, since May of 2009. So between the staff and the planning commission and the August 2009 public session, you know, the planning fair, we've put all that, the planner, Doug Lewand, has put all that into a draft form. That draft was reviewed by staff, put into another form, reviewed by the planning commission, and now it's in another layer of draft form by the planning commission to send out to get comments from the surrounding communities and people who are, who have input into the planning process per the Enabling Act. At the same time, the council can read it now, within the next, same thing within the next 90 days as other people do, and return comments at any time.
Those comments would be returned to the city manager?
You could provide them to either Jackie Lindemore or myself, and we'll get them to the planner and to rest of staff.
Thank you.
Do you see the coffee pots still on? Thank you, Mary. Mr. Law?
I would like to compliment the staff, especially Doug Lewand, as well as the city staff, and for putting such a detailed document together. This is a five-year plan, of course, that comes up every five years, I should say, and is certainly is one of the, one more detailed processes that I've been through. And this one in particular, as Mr. Rubel alluded to, I think more than the last one I was involved with got a lot of public input and significant comments. And I think that's what makes this one master plan all the more special, I guess, or at least involved from the community. So while certainly I understand Mr. Rhodes and his comments, and certainly we always welcome more comments and any ideas or suggestions for this plan, I think, really, it is one of the more detailed and involved master plans I think the city has ever undertaken in some time. And so I just wanted to compliment again the staff and all that who have worked on this. It's been a very lengthy and... It's been a very lengthy and detailed process, and I'll be interested to see when it finally comes back from what communities say around it, surrounding communities say, as well as others.
Further discussion on the motion? On favor to authorize distribution to the surrounding communities, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And under discussion, do we have any commissioner committee reports?
No commissioner committee reports. Didn't we have a committee input meeting? Does anybody want to talk about that? I'll talk about it. We had, well, actually, Monday night, we had Arts and Culture presented a proposal for public art, street furniture, that they're starting, they sent a RFP out, gosh, a long time ago, what, nine months ago, Mr. Campbell, regarding a request for public art and combined with making a seating area out of it, and they have a schematic, a model. They had a model, and they brought the artists in, and some council members attended the meeting, and so they were just talking about what the next steps would be. So there will be some preliminary design, I think, coming. There'll be some public forums that everybody should be looking for, and then preliminary design to come to council, and their target date for installation is in the spring. And I think council did approve that grant, the McCaca grant, last council meeting, so I know everybody at council is aware of that. And then Tuesday, we had community input process on the downtown, and actually had quite a good turnout, some new participants and a good cross-section of the community, some people that were new to the city, and I think it was very, a lot of good information, a lot of good ideas, a lot of things, you know, are big problems that we're working on, but, you know, it's always good to get the new ideas, too, and try to keep focused on the big picture while trying to take care of some of the problems. So I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about that, but I think it actually was run really well. The person that facilitated that, where, she said, you know, I talked to her later, she said, "Well, we're fortunate to have all these people volunteering to be at this meeting and spending two and a half, three hours of their evening after work and coming to, you know, talk about it." But she actually, Cindy, works throughout the state, working with downtown communities, and she commented to me on how fortunate we were to have the kind of turnout. She said she works with cities, you know, much larger than ours that don't even have the kind of turnout we have, and on the ideas that were generated and just the general enthusiasm for the community, she was really impressed with, but her expertise is really invaluable, and we're really fortunate to have her as a volunteer. So anyhow, I don't know if there's any other commissioner committee reports? Mr. Morrow?
I just echo what you said about last Tuesday's work meeting or strategy session relating to our downtown. It was an outstanding event, and thank you, congratulate all those members of our community who came out and shared their thoughts and perspectives. In addition to that, I just wanted to report on the Celine Area Senior Center. We had our executive board meeting last Monday, and there is a general membership meeting and luncheon this Wednesday, which I encourage everyone to come to. The senior center also hosted a very successful Halloween party. I wish I would have been able to attend, but it was the same day that the mayor and city manager and I were in Lansing for a entrepreneurship, small business development workshop. And then the other interesting thing that the executive board empowered the director was to pursue, excuse me, is that apparently in Germany, they force young men, I believe, between the ages of 20 and 25, to complete some sort of public service outside of their own nation. And some other senior centers in the southeastern Michigan area have, I mean, they employ these young men, but they don't actually pay them to work at centers, and it's been a success, and that's something that we're pursuing. So it could be a neat opportunity to both our center and to a young person from Germany to experience what the Celine community is all about. So I wanted to give you all an update on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner committee reports? No? Reports and other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you. Wanted to report that the Fifth Corner, the new teen center for the city, community of Celine, started its normal operation today. Will be in operation Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of each week from 2:45 until 6:00, with the intention that teens from middle school and high school will have a place to go and enjoy themselves under supervision. Also, would like to announce that the Celine Area Historic Society will have Christmas on the farm on December the 11th and the 12th. That's a Saturday and a Sunday. The facility will be open from 1:00 to 5:00. Farmhouse will be decorated in a manner appropriate to the 1930s, and there will be refreshments available, and the gift shop will be open that day. So it's always, it's always kind of fun to go back, and I wasn't born in the 1930s yet, but sort of reminds me of my youth. And the other thing, while I have the floor, if you don't mind, I noticed in the last issue of the Nation Cities Weekly, National League of Cities, they announced a program to reduce service line repair costs, a warranty program, that apparently is available in the state of Michigan. And I know that's been an issue for some of our constituents before. If what I read in the article is accurate, there's no cost to the city, and it's an insurance program that a homeowner buys, and for somewhere between four and six dollars a month, they'll pay for the cost of replacing water and sewer lines from the main to your home. And I think you'd have to pay that warranty for about 35 years in order to balance the costs out. So it seems like a good deal, and I would encourage the city, if that's accurate, to proceed on that program. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Law?
Just an item I wanted to bring up. It was concerning the soliciting permit in the city. There have been some, and I've actually had this, now that I think of it, happened once to me, but not often, there was someone coming to the door, the neighborhood, when it's, clearly it's dark out already, and I know the ordinance, I believe, states that the permit is valid to 8:30 in the evening, no matter what time of the year it is. The summertime, it's not so bad because it's light out, but the mindset of many people at this time of year is after dark. It's like, it's late, and people are settling in and doing other things. And so I just wondered if there was any way or any possibility of maybe visiting this and maybe having this permit, not put a time on it, but maybe say at sunset, at dusk, instead of having some certain time on it? I don't know if staff could maybe look into that and see what they could bring back to council to maybe chew on, maybe not next meeting or some meeting in the near future?
Is that of interest to council? Mr. Morrow?
Mr. Law, and I briefly spoke about this before, the meeting tonight, and ironically, there was an individual soliciting in my neighborhood today and was at my neighbor's door as I was driving to City Hall this evening at 6:25, 6:20. And I do consider soliciting after dark a nuisance and an annoyance, especially to parents with young children and also to the elderly. So I think it is something worth pursuing.
That of general interest, direct staff to look into that, please?
Very good.
Any other reports and announcements?
I just, I think the craft show was a big success, and I hear that downtown stores were busy, so I hope that our town was well endowed besides the craft show with consumers. I always like that, to bring extra people in. And I think I wanted to ask Mr. Campbell and Mr. Grossman to follow up on the concan and, you know, I understand we were going to court, I think it was, was it last week or this previous week?
No, it was Friday, Monday.
If you could give us an update as to where that stands?
Sure, I can, I mean, if Mr. Rose wants to kind of help me out, but I did attend, and it was for, I don't know, I just really lost my train of thought, I apologize. Essentially, they hadn't, our request of the, to abate the nuisance and the demolition, those types of things, they did not comply with our request. So we request for a judgment, default judgment, that's the word I was looking for. They defaulted default judgment in our favor in Judge Connor's court, and there was no one there to contest it, and it did not take very long at all. They did grant it. And so the next step will be to see if they fall in line and follow the default judgment. And so I would defer to Mr. Grossman for next steps if they do not follow the default judgment.
That's correct. There were three LLC organizations involved that we sued, and they defaulted, they didn't answer our complaint, and Judge Connors entered default judgment in our favor. What we need to do now is discuss the enforcement of this default judgment, what would be the best way to enforce it. There are some things that we need to, I'm doing some research on that now, and we'll be making a decision on that pretty soon.
So we'll bring it back to council in two weeks, or?
Of course. Well, yeah, I don't know the exact time, but as soon as it's ready to bring back for further action.
Okay.
Any further action will be, have to be authorized by council. So when we report back, we will have a suggestion, a recommendation as to enforcement action.
Okay. Further items on the agenda? Mr. Rhodes?
Not on the agenda, but we had some discussion about possible participation in the IBM cloud proposal at our last council meeting, and I'm just wondering what the status is of that?
Sure. If you recall, we had the request from IBM for this pilot program, for this cloud technology. At the last meeting, we had walked some agreement language on, and again, I apologize again for that, don't like to do that. But at the direction of council, let's find out some information, which we had actually already had scheduled in that Wednesday following the last meeting, on the third, I guess, we had Dr. Stacy Hobson from IBM, the design team, came to City Hall here, met with myself and some other staff, and Chris Schonk is our IT person that's here as well, and kind of gave us an overview, answered some questions, and I believe you all received a copy of Mr. Schonk's memorandum to myself, that is summing up those discussions. And then we also had further discussions with Michigan Municipal League, and then with city staff. And essentially, they came up with, they came with two areas to consider for this cloud. One was for a development and implementation of a citizen portal, where you could go online, pay your taxes and your utility bills all on the same page, if you will. And then also, while we, we have, when I say it's not completely streamlined, there are a couple, I'll say wrinkles, because they're not bumps, but they're little wrinkles as far as communication between assessing and the building department as far as permits and that type of thing, and people could, so we can make sure if it's a structural, like an addition on a house before a permit, that gets added to assessing, that type of thing. But really, those are the two only areas that we're, have any kind of difficulty, if you will, and I don't want to stress the difficulty because it's not, it's not very difficult, but this technology may help. However, as we, as staff further discussed, we actually had been, those items, those actually, those two items, in the treasures department, the citizens portal is something that the treasures office has on their list to do, which is one of those things that get kind of put up the bar on the pile for now, for whatever reason. And it's similar for, to make the, we use BSNA software for our assessing and building and make those things, to make those two software communicate better. We have those capacities, and we're actually, we got discussing from the, from our discussion with IBM, and made some phone calls, and we have the capability, which we're going to be moving forward with, and much quicker as opposed to this cloud, because there are a number of this, a number, similar technologies out there. I think that, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the big things with the IBM is that taking, because some of the, like BSNA has a cloud type, as well as Northern Data System, which is our financial package software, they have cloud type things, but this has actually taken, what IBM is talking about would be take, to take the BSNA and the Northern Data System to make them talk. So, but again, we have that capability to be able to turn that around rather quickly, so we didn't see a big benefit for us to participate. I mean, certainly it would be great, I mean, it's to be able to participate in this, and again, we're not, but the problem is we're not guaranteed anything, or we're not guaranteed that it will or won't work. So there's no, and they can't guarantee that if we participate and it works, that they would be able to give us, you know, a reduced rate or whatever, even though they said, "Oh, yeah, we think that's a great idea," but, again, because they don't know if it's going to work for sure. And just the other, the other community, you may recall, there was initially, MML had invited Celine and Howell, and the same week that Dr. Hobson was here in Michigan, she met with Howell as well, and Howell's, their whole platform is on BSNA, and they don't have any communication issues, and so IBM said, "Yeah, there's really no, it's not going to work for you either," so they're looking for a couple other communities, with the hopes to kick off, as I mentioned before, at the last meeting, they have been working with some municipalities in New York State in the design phase. So we certainly had a lot more answered, or questions answered for us since the last, since the last city council meeting, but we just, city staff's position that we don't think that this would be beneficial for us to participate, at least at this time.
Okay, thank you for that update. I think that's the wise decision.
And I also, I will, and before I forget, too, I will pass along, I have an updated memo from Mr. Schonk that I'll pass along as well.
Okay, further announcements or reports or discussion? Mr. Ives?
Thank you, Mayor. If I might, follow up on Mr. Campbell's explanation regarding the proposed shared services cloud project. Obviously, staff is recommending that we do not pursue this. Is this going to come back to council for a vote, or is this purely a staff decision?
Well, it's an operations decision. If we were to enter into it, into the agreement, that would be per councils, or up to council. If you would like to be put on the agenda, we certainly can, but at this point, again, because it was an operational decision, didn't put it on it, but we certainly can put it on there for your consideration, if that's what council will.
We, Mr. Campbell and I talked about it at length and determined that it wasn't sufficient. I mean, I think for me personally, I advocated very strongly at the last meeting for this, but it's not clear to me, while this is very innovative and state-of-the-art and could provide benefits, they're not committing to win a benefit. They're basically saying, "Well, we could be a test case, but if their tests come out positive," we're not really, so I think if there's further definition that there would actually be a positive outcome versus just being a test case, then there could be some warranted reason to do it. But at this point in time, we already have the technology to implement the two communication pieces that aren't communicating, so in those two departments, I mean, in the building and assessing and, what was the other one, payroll, the portal, the citizen portal. So it didn't seem like, unless IBM is willing to come to the table more with more of a commitment besides just testing us, then I'm not sure it's the best use of time for council to say that we should operationally require staff to do that. And so that's really why we, and I apologize, because I actually had meant to put that on the agenda today, because Todd and I talked about it right before the work session. But, you know, at this point in time, there isn't, I mean, if IBM came back tomorrow and said, "Yeah, you know, if we develop a product from this and, you know, we would apply it to your city at a discounted rate," I mean, that's what I was looking for, is an innovative way to improve our technology systems. And they're not making a commitment, as Mr. Campbell said, to anything but using us as a test. And that wasn't my understanding, my expectation was there would be some kind of, I mean, I sort of correlated to when we did the complete streets ordinance, you know, the whole idea there, for me personally, was. there, for me personally, was maybe we could have, there will be policies out there in the future that would provide grants or something if you moved in that direction, which that has come down. So, you know, I think the thing is, at this point, they're anxious to get, I mean, this has been, September is when they first, you know, talked to Chris and Todd, and I think they're anxious to find a city that maybe isn't, I mean, what, the good news is, they are a really close to state-of-the-art, we are coming again at a pretty high level, and there's two minor pieces, which, you know, I would argue, some citizens really don't care that much about being able to pay their bills, you know, in a more coordinated manner, because they don't want to pay them really anyhow, you know, kind of thing. So, and then I do think that building and assessing at some point would be beneficial, but again, with limited staff time because of operations. It didn't seem to make that much sense, but if council wants to bring it back for further discussion, certainly, but that was a discussion, it wasn't just operational. I also participate with this decision.
Thank you. I guess I respect, and I might even concur with the staff's recommendation, but I guess my argument is more procedural ones, since this originally was something that was presented to council. And my understanding was that we were going to have, or at least pursue getting a representative of IBM to come and address council, and that questions would be answered. And my understanding was it was council that was going to make this decision. I can live with staff making the decision. I do think, however, we should remember that initiatives of this kind could well, in the future, result in a reduction of staff. So it might be in the best interests of staff to oppose this sort of initiative. So I don't know, I will, I will let my colleagues, if they choose to do so, decide whether this should be pursued, or whether we should just respect the decision of staff and go with that.
Mr. Morrow.
Actually, first of all, I smell something burning. I hope that thing is unplugged. My concern is a little bit different than that of my good colleague, Mr. Ivy. And I don't mean to beat this dog to death or be pugilistic at this time of the evening, but shouldn't the analysis that this wasn't going to be effective or beneficial to us been made prior to that proposal's inclusion on our agenda at our last council meeting? It seems like we got the cart before the horse on that one, and, you know, God bless you, you know I think that staff does an amazing job, but I have a concern about that. Would you be able to address that, or provide any insight if not?
Sure. Well, as I said last time, certainly, we did, we got some better answers since we've met. What we had understood was a little different, I think, than what we actually found out to be true, so I'm glad that council did direct staff to hold off and not move forward. And as I've also said, I mean, that's certainly, we had been requested to get approved as soon as possible, and with the information we had, we thought it was what I think better than what, as we found out further, better than what it was, or than it is. So, yeah, I can't disagree. You know, we probably, in hindsight, certainly held off and waited till we met with Dr. Hobson and just brought it to this meeting, if that was what we felt was the direction we were going, or should go.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Further discussion? This item? Do we have any other discussion items? Under Public Common or the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make common or question to city council, this public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person, and would like to speak as requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Any citizen comments? Not, is there any other business coming for the Celine City Council? Our next meeting is December 6th at 7:30 PM. We already excuse Councilmember Lill's absence. We need a motion to adjourn at 9:05.
So moved.
Second.
Morrow, second law, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.